February second. Okay, for February second, two thousand twenty-two to order at two oh six. But I hope I get my new glasses soon.
Right, um, just Ted, I made you co-host so you could share your presentation.
Oh, okay, great. Let me do that.
Well, there's nothing on the agenda besides Ted and the by, uh, rewrite of the bylaws. I don't think there's anything else I need to announce.
Yeah, we just.
Zoning audit and update. And Ted, if you could take it away?
Yep, can everyone see that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. All right, so I'm gonna go through some slides that talk about process here, what we've done so far and where we're headed as far as the zoning revisions. So you remember last time we talked about, you know, the evaluation of the zoning regulations? You know, for the first things we want to do was reformat the zoning, which I'm actually still working on. And then update and, you know, replace the zoning, which we've done. And we've converted those into new design guidelines and standards, which you've all have copies of. For three, and then, you know, we, we talked about, you know, what are the steps in terms of changing different sections of the zoning bylaw itself? And so the focus was, at least from, you know, from my understanding, was that we would, we would focus on the planned development district, the downtown area. We would update the table of use. And we would update the signed bylaws, or a couple of other things here and there that were identified by the board, but those seem to be the highest priorities at this point. And in what I think we can do realistically with, with the budget that we have for this phase one. So the appendices, which was, you know, sort of loosely design guidelines, we've really, you know, changed that into realistic, you know, design, sustainable development, design guidelines. And, you know, from here, they can take place, they, they can be, become part of the zoning bylaw, you know, like we just talked about in terms of downtown, the sign regulations and the use regulations. They can be integrated into planning board rules and regulations where there are currently some very minor design guidelines today. They can be integrated into the subdivision regulations. Specifically in terms of road design, complete streets, that kind of thing. And then it could also be integrated into the best practices guidebook. I'm not sure if that's an official document that has been adopted by the town. Uh, but there's a lot of good ideas in there in terms of sustainable development. So the zoning appendices, appendices included, you know, appendix A through G. So A was really, you know, the loose design guideline had a series of, you know, images and some basic graphics and design guideline standards. But it was really sort of disorganized and a lot of the images were unclear and sort of dated. So most of that got converted into the draft sustainable standards. Um, and then the next step is to take those, you know, those specific, you know, some of the specific ones in, integrate them into the zoning bylaw itself. Uh, appendix B was inclusionary zoning requirements for affordable housing. That really belongs in the planning board rules and regulations. Uh, appendix C was a flow chart that really is part of the application forms and materials, I think, that's what along same with the appendix D, which is in plan checklist. And then appendix E is additional site plan considerations. That's all part of the application process. Appendix F is performance parameters. That's related to sort of environmental standards and uses. So that really goes into section five in regard to uses that cause certain noise, vibration, light, economic, natural resource hazards, material issues. And then references in, in appendix G would be eliminated. So the appendix basically, as I mentioned, really, you know, get integrated primarily into the sustainable development standards, you know, design guidelines, which are part of your planning board rules and regulations. Uh, but in terms of uh, the, this article five use regulations, special zoning districts, the plan unit development district, which is downtown and signs, there'll be, the, those particular sustainable development standards will be revised to make them zoning bylaws and integrated into the zoning bylaws as amendments. And then a lot of the rest of it would go into the planning board rules and regulations. There already is a section for design guidelines for site development. But there's not much to it. And so basically this would really bolster that whole section and would sort of complement the standards that are in the zoning bylaws. Uh, you know, but for example, there's several references to the the appendices that would now become references to the new design guidelines and standards. So in terms of the planned development districts, you know, generally sort of a general outline of what I'm working on is really sort of, you know, make sure that we integrate the traditional New England architecture and village development patterns in the development standards. We want to make sure that, that the standards for, you know, the frontage of the property are oriented towards streetscapes and open spaces, if there's space between the building and the, in the sidewalk. We realize that the right of way is fairly narrow down there and we don't have a lot of room to work with. So that we want to make sure that we make the most of that frontage so that it really contribute to the, to the walkability of the district. Uh, we want to make sure that the dimensions and density reflect, you know, your traditional, traditional village context. Or facilitate more mixed use in that area. And then we want to update standards for parking turn access, streetscapes that sort of relate to, again, that, that traditional New England village pattern of. So here's a, here's what it looks like when you, when you take your dimensional standards and you create a diagram out of it. So that, yeah, along the frontage, you have seventy-five foot of frontage. Um, but basically there's a twenty-foot setback, fifteen on the side and fifty on the rear. So that creates a pretty small envelope of, for somebody to take it on a lot and, and at a building too. So we may want to think, rethink some of those, those standards. I mean, instead of having fifty foot in the back, you could do some good screening and buffered standards. But we don't want people to have to develop, you know, accumulate parcels in order to do the development they want. If there's ten thousand, they have a ten thousand square foot parcel, that should be enough to do pretty much what they would want to do on a given lot that's, you know, on, on Central Street. We need to reexamine those.
Ted, can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Do you, do you mind if the board members ask you questions during your presentation? Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted them to let them know.
No, I don't want this to be a, just a formal presentation.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I'm just going through these fairly quickly, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to follow up on this, this particular issue with the downtown and, and the smart growth principles, which, you know, encourages infill development and
Right.
and currently the way this reads, we're really creating gaps and things and where you really want to fill in where you have town facilities and things. So we're kind of, we're trying to get smart growth in, integrated, but at the same time, some of our regulations really don't work towards that. So I just, I just wanted to kind of reiterate that to the, to the board.
Right, right. So have you, have you looked? Go ahead, go ahead, yeah.
If I could add one question again on the PD zone, I know those figures you put up with the setbacks and such are for residential use within the PD zone. How are we gonna speak about the commercial use in the PD zone? Because the setbacks in that are a lot different.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken. Did you see that or notice that aspect of it?
Oh, I did. You know what? I've got the wrong diagram up. Let me, um.
Okay, yeah, I was looking at that. That's the residential aspect.
Okay, you're right. You're absolutely right. Yeah, yeah. I'll go back and look at that commercial diagram. But the point is, you know, we want to make sure that if ten thousand square feet is what's necessary for a commercial development, we want to make sure that, you know, the people can have a, you know, you know, a good opportunity to fill that space up and really build up the walkable environment. So really, what, what's really important is what happens along the frontage. You know, the building's gonna be set back. We don't want parking between the sidewalk and the buildings for the most part. Most, they should mostly go on the side into the rear. Um, but also what happens between the building and, and the sidewalk is really important. Typically, you know, there is, there is a setback, you'd have a plaza space, you'd have a pocket park. You'd have something that sort of extends the sidewalk. Maybe there's some outdoor dining seating, that kind of thing. But, um, you know, knowing that the street isn't very wide, you know, you don't have a lot of opportunity within the right of way to do much. So some of that can be done, um, you know, on the frontage of these developments. If, as long as it, you know, again, it adds to the, the walkable environment. So I think that, you know, Cumberland Farms, I'm not sure how everyone feels about Cumberland Farms, but I like Cumberland, this Cumberland Farms. It's the best one. Actually, because I did exactly what I think. You take in an old building that probably couldn't be saved. Um, and it was replaced with a building that came right up to the street. There's somewhat of a setback. But in that setback, you're putting it to use. There's a, you know, there's a little area where you can, you know, little benches and tables out there where you can have, you know, your sandwich that you get from Cumberland Farms or whatever. And, um, you know, so it's well done. It basically, it's creating sort of an, an area for, you know, pedestrians to get off the sidewalk onto these little plaza spaces and, and, you know, have something to eat. So I think that's the kind of thing, if there is a setback, it's gotta be, you know, intentional open space that contributes to the walkable environment.
Excuse me, Ted, for one second.
Sure.
That setback, as we go back, commercial has a different setback than residential.
Right.
Uh, so I think it's only five feet. I might be pulling it off, uh, the top of my head on the setback for the commercial. But one of the problems when we're doing this is the PD zone also extends in different parts of the town to residential areas. And I think that's why we originally put the residential aspect as compared to the commercial. But we might want to consider and everybody else that we make a special PD zone for the downtown.
Yeah.
As a small setbacks that keep the big setbacks for the residential areas of town.
That's exactly, that's exactly right, Guy. I think that, and that, and I, what I think we do is we don't call it, you know, the downtown area. You know, on Central Street, you know, focus on Central Street. I don't think that become, that's a planned development district anymore. I think it's really the village center or the town center district. And it's, we have, you know, unique standards for that particular area. So you're right, I, there are planned development districts, but I think this one really needs to be, you know, but it's, it's special attention needs to be that, to that sort of mixed use, walkable, walkable environment.
Agreed.
Yeah. So we'll probably call it something else, you know, village center, town center. Uh, and, you know, it'll, it'll really, you know, mixed use and walkable environment.
Is downtown district, downtown district or something like that?
Yeah, called, yeah, downtown, yeah, yeah. And when I say mixed use, you know, what I'm, what I'm really saying is that that could be horizontal or vertical mixed use. So on Central Street itself, you want to maintain this opportunities, oops, my bad, at street level. So you wouldn't allow residential necessarily up on the street. You know, you want to reserve that for business opportunities. That's where, you know, people have the best visibility, whether you're walking or in a car. Um, so you want, you know, to, to save those spaces for commercial, commercial use. But up above those spaces could be office space or it could be residential. And then off the street, you know, back deeper into the lot, that could be residential and or commercial as well. But I think it's important that, you know, that, that frontage, you know, that faces out on Central has to be reserved for, for commercial use. Better frontage zone, a commercial frontage though. But, I mean, you know, beyond that, that whatever happens between the sidewalk and the building itself, that's gotta be something that's, you know, intentionally, you know, uh, oriented toward pedestrians, whether it's outdoor seating or plaza or public art or what have you. Uh, even street trees, if you don't have the room in, uh, within the right of way in certain areas.
So just so that the board, the, the PD zone that we have in place starts to address this, but it is not in any detail about residential on the frontage of, in your commercial zone. So I think this takes it a step further, especially, you know, maybe not so for the PD zones down in Waterville or Winchita, or in Winchita Springs, but for the downtown district, I think it's crucial for that continuity.
Yeah, it is definitely. I, I've worked with a lot of small village centers, you know, West Concord's a good example. You know, by large, you know, they're, you know, got a really vibrant sort of, uh, you know, district, uh, mixed use district on Commonwealth Avenue there. Uh, but there's a couple of gaps and that's where there's some old apartment buildings, you know, sort of amongst the different commercial mixed use buildings. And, you know, if you're walking down, it's just sort of a, you know, it's sort of a, a blank space, you know, and it's a good, I mean, and if it were in commercial use, it would be one of the better places to be because the visibility is so good. So it's, again, you're, you're really trying to balance, uh, you know, adding some diversity to your housing stock, but at the same time reserving those best spaces for commercial, uh, and business uses, which are at street level. So I just think this is a good example, uh, especially, anytime you make Cumberland Farms do something like that, you, it's a real win.
It was a lot of work, a lot of, a lot of people, short commission and, but, um, and when developers come into town now, we show them this and we tell them, this, this is the standard. So they know, so they know going into it, so.
Tracy, I would call this, uh, gas sideways. So gas stations, it's one, gas station convenience stores always want to put the pumps out front, like it's a big sign, right? And so what towns are doing, especially down south and out west, but a little bit now in, uh, in Massachusetts, is they're making them put it on the side or actually in the, behind the building. What they call gas backwards. So we got them to do a sideways in North Hampton, which is nice, but not as nice as this one.
Yeah.
It's really nice. It's two stories.
You can imagine what they came in with originally. It was
Yeah, oh, I know.
Typical, they're typical in the back, you know, right up against here.
Right.
So, yeah.
Plan A or Plan B, but they're basically the same.
Yeah.
And then what I got them to do in situ, actually, they, they refused to do it in situ with another company came in and did it, and it's a, it's a gas backwards. So just like this building, it's up on the sidewalk and they've got a little area for outdoor seating and the gas pumps are behind uh, the building and it makes such a difference, especially when you're trying to build up your village center. And, um, so I'll take some pictures of that. Just getting finished right now. One, good example of, you know, we want gas stations, people need gas stations, but um, if it's in a village context like this, it's really important that, you know, it doesn't become this giant sort of, uh, you know, gas alley kind of thing.
Guy, did you want to say something?
No, no, I, I just was making a comment about Cumberland Farms whining about having to do that building. But now they're proud as punch of it. And, uh, they show it off like it's their star.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they're not, they don't want to do this on a regular basis. Ultimately, I think it's gonna happen because, you know, when, especially when you get into village centers, that people, you know, planning directors are studying to, you know, take hold of this issue. They don't want, they want gas to be convenient for people. Uh, but they don't want to have to look at the canopies or the, you know, the, you know, the gas pumps in the, in the front. And there's really no need for it. I mean, because a building is, a building, attractive building is a better advertisement to begin with. You know the gas is already there. So why do you have to put it out front? Anyways, this is a much nicer example than their play, their plan B. The next thing we're gonna work on, actually working on already is the use regulations. You know, basically a lot's happened in the last fifteen years since this has been updated. Uh, we want to format, we want to, you know, add, you know, different terms and uses uh, that have been developed over the last fifteen years. We want to make sure that there's definitions in section two, uh, that, you know, that, that back up the, the uses that are integrated into the table. And also, you know, we want to make sure that there's performance standards when you're talking about uses that could potentially have an impact on their neighbors. So we want to make that sort of part of one, one project. This is an example here. Breakdown of the different types of uses and then by zoning district. And then it references specific performance standards, you know, for, for certain types of, you know, uses that could have an impact on their neighbors.
I'm sorry I keep interrupting, but I just, I, I, I want to tell the board that the format that we're looking for in this zoning kind of follows the standard that the master plan set for the readability and the access. So I think that this is an exceptional recommendation so that, um, you know, the, being user friendly, we have a lot of people that come in and have a hard time reading our zoning bylaws. And so this goes a long way to helping to change that.
Right. And the colors actually reflect the colors of the, on the zoning map in this case.
Perfect.
And then the last part is the, the sign regulations. We want to, um, update those standards, you know, provide some good diagrams and photos so people get a better understanding of, uh, the signs that we, we want to attract to town and want people to think about. And, you know, broaden the, the types of signs with good design standards attached them. You know, marquee signs maybe in your town center and downtown monument signs, which are, you know, attractive sort of that are based with, you know, sort of a stone base and a, and a sign integrated into it, good for business parks, good for industrial and some commercial uses, window signs, uh, vertical banner signs, uh, so on and so forth. So there's lots of good diagrams that are part of the design guidelines. Uh, but we'll integrate those with specific standards in the revised sign bylaw.
Uh, excuse me, Ted.
Yeah.
When you're talking about signs, uh, we talking about signs for the whole town or do you think you'll be different districts will have different regulations as compared to the downtown as compared to the rest of it? Including the idea of what the Supreme Court did with, uh, religious signs, things like that.
Well, that has to be addressed, uh, with the, you know, the, you know, the content of the sign. Well, and I, I've got a good sort of draft going already that, that addresses that. But Article nine dresses signs on, in all parts of town. Uh, and we will too. We're just gonna open up the box a little bit and then, and sort of add some additional types of signs with good standards. Uh, but we'll, we'll, we'll identify in which, uh, in which district each of these different, uh, stand, these, each of these different regulations sign types can, can, can be placed and what the sizes are, what the dimensions are, uh, that sort of thing. So, yeah, it'll, it'll cover all, all districts.
Um, something that we run into a lot, excuse me, are now the electronic signs. Our, our bylaws are very prohibitive on those, you know, it's, it counts as twice the size and things like that.
Yep.
And we've got a lot of businesses that are asking for that, um, and a lot of organizations, like the, the Legion has wanted to put a new sign up for several, for actually at least a couple of years. And, um,
You're talking like electric message signs?
Yes, yes. And those are not allowed right now, so.
Uh, excuse me, Ted, we had revised, uh, the sign about electronic signs when electronic signs started to become popular. It was right in the beginning, so.
Correct.
Yeah, it's probably a lot, uh, dated.
Yes.
Okay. So we need to, we need to put that in there some ways and some, this is a, is this part of like the main sign body or the, is this like one of those
I think
gas stations where they change a price electronically and
Yeah, I think what they wanted to do was have, you know, their, their Legion sign on top, but then at the bottom have like, you know, like advertise an event that's coming up at the Legion and things like that.
Oh, I see.
And, um, and I don't mean to just, you, you know, they're just the ones that are coming to my mind right now, but we have had a few other, like I think that, um, the Clark Memorial YMCA maybe, and, you know, there's things that are going on in town that they want to be able to advertise.
Right.
Very tasteful signs out there like that because Eric Yance's got one, uh, Athol High School has one too. It's very, uh, it advertises what's going on at the school and whatnot.
Which? Is that Murdoch or is that, where, where's that, where's that?
Templeton.
Templeton, okay.
Yeah, and Athol High has, well, they have one, they advertise.
And I think just to Guy's point, when these were originally written, this, they weren't really that popular and they've come, they've just come so far.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, so what we would do is we would probably put together a, a requirement for like the overall square footage of the sign, uh, given so like, if it's like a, uh, like a, just a regular like ground sign and then a certain percentage that could be electronic, you know, messaging. Yeah, so we'll work that in for sure.
Just pros and cons to all that.
What's that?
I said just pros and cons to all that, so.
And the other thing, uh, which isn't part of this, you know, this phase, but I think it's really important is the updating the zoning map itself. I know you had, uh, uh, Monmouth City Regional, uh, put that together a long time ago. Uh, but it truly, you know, really does need to get updated because it's missing, you know, some of the,
Yeah.
some of the, the, the districts and, um, it, it just needs to be done. Uh, and I, and then in going through the, uh, the appendices, there was a reference to the distance, because split lots, split between two, two different zoning districts. And there actually was a reference that, uh, these corridors, uh, typically they're three hundred feet the line of the street. Um, so that's important to put on the map if that is adopted originally. Because you really don't know, uh, it's not, it's not indicated on the current zoning map. They basically, the, 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 the zoning line is three hundred feet from the center line. So. It really should be done.
This is one of the, the district local technical assistant grant round that's coming up. Last night I briefly mentioned to the board that there's a couple of different possibilities to apply for one's housing production plan, but the other is to update the zoning map and, uh, I'm leaning towards asking the town manager and the board of selectmen to support this because there are other funding sources for the housing production plan. And I think this is imperative that we at least get it so that it's current.
Yeah.
I, I think, uh, excuse me, just to note Nat, that if we're gonna update the zoning map, we should also take a look at our zoning districts, what are viable today and what is not viable, say, such as the Yashua Spacing District or the Gulf Overlay District.
Right, that's right. That's a good point, Guy. Is that the, the overlay district? That's really doesn't, it's, it's of no consequence anymore, right?
Yeah, and we had already, we had already removed it, so it shouldn't be on the map.
Was it removed at the town meeting though?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It was when we added the Lake Menominee overlay.
That's right.
Oh, so you added that one? You got rid of the golf one?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that needs to be off, yeah.
Yeah, even if we just bring it up to today's, um, accuracy and then if we end up making changes, it, it's gonna be a lot easier because it's at least current. You know, so.
Right.
And, and to add, and to add this language on split zoning because split zoning is also something we encounter that, um, is problematic.
Yeah, yep. And if you don't want to use a regional planning commission, I work with another consultant all the time who does really nice zoning maps, so.
Okay.
Beat up to you, but.
Okay, we can talk offline and maybe I can, maybe I can do both housing production plan and the zoning map.
Yep.
Just for note, Ted, I'm chairman of the regional planning.
Oh, you are, okay. Is Glenn Eaton still there?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we're, we're friends from way back when I was in Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
Good guy.
Yeah, he is. Talks a lot, he's a good guy.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, that's really all I had for today. I mean, I, I, we could go through the, uh, the sustainable development standards if you like. I mean, I'm sure you're probably all a little bit overwhelmed with all the stuff that's in there, but, um, you know, I, I really thought it was important to, you know, put together some good, uh, design guidelines and figure out from there, you know, how we want to, want to put them in the and figure out from there, you know, how we want to, want to put them in the play. So for the most part, I think they would go into planning board rules and regulations, except for the, the, the things that we've just talked about in terms of the signs and uses. So in, in, in the downtown design guideline, the downtown, the new downtown, I think. But anyways, it, it obviously it's very comprehensive, you know, there's a lot of new diagrams and images in there. Basically what they are is they sort of supplement the planning board's review of site plans under the zoning bylaws, so that if, you know, or some, or subdivision regulations. So if someone comes in with a, you know, a new, you know, residential development, they want to do like an open space or a cluster development. And there's some good guidelines that are into, into these development standard or development guidelines in, in these standards, these sustainable development standards. They can sort of guide the planning board through the process, making sure that the final result is, is good in what you're looking for. And so, you know, whether it's commercial or industrial or mixed use or residential, there's good standards here that sort of bolster the subdivision or site plan review process.
I would say one thing, you did, you did an excellent job on this so far. I mean, you did a real good job. Changes that need to be made, but we'll make them as we go along, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's only a first draft, so obviously, you know, I'm sure there's lots of things that, you know, we could do better. But I just want to give, you know, everyone sort of an opportunity to, you know, see what, you know, what's, what's happening out there in terms of, you know, contemporary zoning regulations as well as design guidelines. And this is some of the things I've been working on for the last, you know, number of years. And so I've got some pretty good templates of good standards and guidelines regarding to open space and complete streets and how you activate the sidewalks and so on. So I think that this is sort of, you know, upgrading the whole sort of mix of zoning regulations and design guidelines for, for Winchita. Ideally, that's, that's the idea.
Um, Les, you've come in a couple of times and had some questions about some of the stuff in the guidelines. Do you want to?
I think I have to go through them as we go through these things. I've got a mark on those, you know.
Yeah.
I, I concentrated on what we, what we had discussed because this whole thing cannot go to a panel meeting at one time.
No, no.
No, no.
It's going to get thrown out tomorrow, you know? But, you know, we have to do piecemeal it all the way through. So if, if we do, like you said, three, five, three, five and nine, where those are the the sustainable site development and the commercial industrial mixed use in the signs, worked on those, we could probably.
So Les, what you, the thing is, is what you just, the, the, the development standards are different than the zoning bylaw.
Right.
So in the zoning bylaw, we're just gonna, we're just gonna do like a downtown PD district. We're going to do the use table and we're going to do signs. We're going to take, you know, or this, that's the goal. And then we're going to use the design, these development standards to get some of our information. And some of the information is in our zoning bylaw already that we'll look at, okay? So I know it's a lot of information and sometimes the, the two get merged together. But right now, try to look at the, the development standards as its own document and then the zoning bylaw.
That's right, yeah.
Question, and this is something that's out of this window right now. What were you doing over Central Street? Okay, and as I read through some of the stuff that you just got, at the, where you have an entrance off of there as a driveway, let's say at the bank or pharmacy or anywhere. As a pedestrian crosses that area, there's supposed to be a different type of material on that sidewalk. But am I right Ted? That's what I was.
Yeah, yeah, you're supposed to, you're, you're creating a break in the sidewalk, there's got to be a difference in material, yeah, yeah.
Is it going, is, is this going to be incorporated in the new design of that, of Central Street? Or is this just something we're going to do as we go along? And this is, I know it's a lot, a lot of tax, that crazy, but.
That would be under section eight, which is the complete streets there. And so again, this would be in the planning board rules and regulations rather than actually in the zoning bylaws. I mean, it could be put into the zoning bylaws, but, you know, we don't want to, you know, to dump all these into the, into the zoning bylaw going to town meeting could be a, you know, real heavy lift. So it's in your, either your subdivision regulations or in your planning board rules and regulations, I think that, you know, the planning board can ask for that when you're seeing a new site plan on Central Street.
Excuse me Ted, isn't a lot of that stuff already mandated by the government? As far as the different textures of items and things like that for ADA?
Well, you own the street, right? You own Central Street.
Yeah.
Oh, but I mean those, as we see the bumpy things before you get to the street to let the blind people know that there's a street that, aren't those included in the ADA?
Well, if you're using public funds, and you typically are when you're making improvements to Central or to some of the other streets, yeah, you have to, you have to abide by the design standards, which include ADA standards. That's why you see at the intersections, you know, those, those non-slip plates and that sort of thing in the, in the sort of the taper and all that. That's part of the, you know, providing that money is you do it according to the ADA requirements. Yes, yes.
Yeah, but they're not required at a driveway, like a curb, like a curb. And that's, and that's what this, and that's what this adds is a little bit of an extra. There's still going to be vehicular traffic here that you need to be aware of.
Right. Let me, let me go back, let me go to that particular slide. Let's see if I can do that.
I didn't mean to get off the subject here, I just wanted.
Not at all. No, I mean, if that's, if you've got questions about the development standards, we should go over them. I just have a lot of slides on them, so I don't know if you want to go over the whole thing. But if we're going to, let's see, what do we are here? Commercial residential signs. Open space. Okay. Yeah, so here are the complete street design standards, so. Now there's different segments to the sidewalk, you know, what, you know, what belongs where from, you know, clear passage for pedestrians. And then there's the furnishings out and then there's the, you know, utility zone, that sort of thing. We do have standards in there. I don't think I've shown on my slides, but there are standards for curb cuts in here. What did I do in them? Curb extensions, street enhancements. I don't have a diagram of it, but in the, in the, the standards themselves, there is a diagram and some standards that, that address the curb cuts for driveways across the, across the sidewalk, yes. So those are in there, yes. Again, they wouldn't have to be necessarily part of the zoning bylaw, but that would be something that would come into play when you're looking at a commercial site plan. You know, Central, Central Street or elsewhere, where there's a curb cut being put into across the sidewalk.
Not, not to go a little on that since you're issue off on it. As far as the design standards in our zoning bylaws, I know I was having thoughts and discussions about referring to the design standards a lot in the bylaws and just to the design standards themselves, so that we can change the design standards without having to change the bylaw. So when you're working on these, if you could use that thought in your.
Well, that's an excellent point, Guy. And I was thinking about that today is that, you know, in the current bylaw, it refers to image XYZ or figure XYZ, which were a part of the old appendices. What we'll do is replace those references to different parts of the sustainable development standards, the design guidelines. So that we don't have to, you know, make, keep making changes to the bylaw itself. You know, just refer to that particular section of what becomes part of the planning board rules and regulations. So that's, that's, I was thinking about exactly that thing today. As I'm going through and, and re, and, and reformatting the, the bylaw.
I can, I can throw something up, what, why I was thinking about, why I was thinking about this. And I, I agree with you, this is the standards. The, the only idea is, if we're tearing everything up right now and we don't, I, I, I kind, I kind of thought that some of this stuff that we would go through is the new rules and regulations of the whole area, state. Okay, whatnot. I mean, I don't want to get these, this whole sidewalks all done that have to have being torn up and put in these regulations, these other sidewalks that fall across it, you know what I'm talking about, so.
So, so just to clear that up Les, the, the project, the Central Street project is all in the public right away. So everything that we're doing, we, we wouldn't, the only time that any of that would be dug up is with a new curb cut. You know, existing curb cuts are, they're not changing it. We, anything like if they had to do it over, it may just be the surface that they would have to change. But it wouldn't, but it wouldn't be the town, it would be the applicant. Because that's typically a, a development gets a curb cut permit from the DPW and the DPW tells them how they're going to do it. That, this standard we would add into his curb cut.
I mean, I, I understand that, but I was just trying to think of, you know, outside the blocks that, you know, you know, the state, you could come down anytime and say, look, you got to change this, you know? We don't, we don't, we don't need that.
Well, there's a moratorium, there'll be a moratorium for five years on the tip project. We won't be digging any of it up. So.
All right, I'm sorry I got off the project, I got off the subject.
No, that's.
No, you didn't, you didn't.
No, that's what we're talking about, so.
I think also just from my own opinion, this is just mine and my perspective, when you have more in your design standards, it gives you the ability to apply things more site specific. Whereas if it's in the zoning bylaw, that's it, that's how you're doing it. And if you're not doing it that way, you're getting a variance or you're doing something else. Whereas, whereas when it refers to a regulation, we all know the planning board has a little bit more leeway on, okay, this site, this, because there's no perfect standards, there's, there's no perfect rules and regulations. But if you tie your hands and you cannot do it, apply it to a site specific scenario, then you're creating more problems. And we see that, we see that sometimes too, where a, a zoning bylaw is too broad of a brush. And it, and it, and it could be very easily that you can enforce it in one area of town or in one area of this district, but you can't in another. And.
Right, right. And, and Tracy, a good example of that is when you're looking at a, you know, cluster development or residential development, you know, what's open space? You know, 20% of the lot's going to be open space. And that's where these design guidelines come in. So, you know, we show them, you know, all these different possible types of open spaces and some basic design standards. Nothing too rigid, but it could be anything from, you know, a little pocket park to a, you know, to just a roof, a rooftop deck if you're on, you know, commercial street. I mean, it's just, it does, it depends on the context, you know? You could integrate, or you could integrate, you know, a little like plaza or, you know, playground, you know, pocket park. Or you can do something in front of your commercial business, a sidewalk terrace. And so it, it's, we're basically saying, you know, depending where you are in town and what you're doing, you know, we want to make sure that, that open space is, you know, high quality and usable. It's not just a patch of grass in the, in the outer edge of your development. It's really something that's integrated into the whole development. You've got this variety of different opportunities with some good guidelines to, to sort of, you know, you know, help developers integrate that stuff.
The perfect example.
Yeah. It just leads a better development if you've got, you know, some basic design guidelines and standards and get up with good graphics and images, you know, give them a plant idea and.
You know, it also helps the town too in the, it, it helps the applicant in the permitting process when the expectation is clear and concise.
Right.
And, and it also helps a person in my position when they come in and want to do something and I say, well, this doesn't even reflect this guideline. And then they go, you know, so.
Right. Yeah, we're, we're, we're basically in these design guidelines, we're pre, you know, sort of leading them to some good choices. Saying what size fits all with open space or anything else, we're just saying, you know, based on the context, whether you're downtown or whether you're in rural areas of town, here are your, you know, here are some choices we want you to consider.
Question Ted.
Yeah.
You've gone over that we're going to do with three, deal with three sections on this go around, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
PD zone and signs, correct?
Right, yeah.
And now, do you, your, your timeframe? Do you think you'd be able to have these things ready for town meeting for this cycle? So that means that it would need to be all buttoned up by April 4th, which is when the warrant closes. I mean, could have after, but yeah, that would be drop dead time.
Yeah, Guy, I'm, I'm actually working on them now, those three parts, those three articles. And I should have a full draft by the end of February for each one of those. So we can get started on reviewing them and then, you know, making sure the planning board is comfortable with them and then sort of vetting them with the public. So I'm well on my way to getting the draft done.
Fantastic, fantastic. Another question, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
Uh, these three, these three sections for town meeting, and then we're talking about design standards, which is a different item because they're regulations brought on by the planning board. What do you see in the timeframe on the design standards?
Uh, yeah, the development standards or design guidelines, but we're going to rename them design guidelines. And the idea is that they would go into the planning board rules and regulations. So I think that sort of secondary issue, I think, obviously I want to get the, the zoning articles written up and, and before the planning board and so we can vet those with the public. So once we get the zoning done, you know, again, that's going to take me a couple of weeks, three weeks to, to finish that first draft. Then I'll go right back to the design guidelines and I'll reorganize, reorganize them so that they can be integrated into the planning board rules and regulations.
Okay, I see a talk in six months.
Yeah.
For the design, yeah. So you're going to work on those in conjunction with the complete zoning.
Yeah. We've got, we've got the full draft now of the design guidelines, so the planning board can, can go through those, you know, now.
We get over this hurdle.
Yeah, and then if you've like, you know, you've got comments and feedback and you want me to make some changes here and there, just let me know. And in the meantime, I'll be finishing up the, the three zoning articles. And then you can give me your feedback and we can, I can shift over to the design guidelines and wrap those up as well, so.
Thank you.
Guy, could I ask you a question or the members of the planning board? For the purpose of scheduling, what do you want to do, public participation? If anybody has any ideas, it would be nice to kind of get, you know, once Ted has something for people to comment on. What, what were you thinking for public participation and the public hearing process?
Well, if Ted says he's going to be done by the end of the month, and maybe if we look at our first meeting in March to review everything, that would start the public participation part.
Okay.
But not under the hearing and then we can schedule our hearing from then because that gives a lot of time between that and town meeting.
Okay, all right.
Now this is additive. And whatever else we need to do for it besides the hearing, anything. And we were discussing, I think came up, let's throw this out, the questionnaire.
Yeah, like a survey kind of thing?
Survey. That could work in conjunction with that. I don't know what Ted's thoughts and your thoughts on that are, Tracy?
I think, I think it's easy, I think because zoning is such an overwhelming thing. I think it's easy, I think because zoning is such an overwhelming thing, to ask hypothetical questions are difficult, so I kind of would like to see Ted's drafts and maybe then, you know, have people comment on that or something that, something gets derived from those drafts.
Yeah, we could go for that, maybe a questionnaire before the hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you're right, Tracy. I think it's hard for people to sort of conceive zoning, you know, you know. I, I think what we, uh, what we do is we write up the draft and then I boil that down into a series of, you know, presentation slides. And we can, we can put that into PDF and let people look at it online, so they get sort of the, the gist of the three articles. And then, and then they can sort of, you know, and, and they can watch the discussion with the planning board, yes, or, as the, the drafts. And then ask them for like, you know, what do you think? You know, do you, you, you like these, uh, re-changes and?
Yeah, and it still gives us ti, it still gives the board time to interject and edit, you know, because nothing is, nothing's concrete, so it's.
Right. Yeah, so I think if we post the, the draft articles and we post a summary in terms of presentation slides, and they watch the discussion, either, you know, on Zoom or, um, you know, in, in person, I think that they'll, you know, get much better understanding of what the purpose of these three articles are.
Okay.
Get asked what they think, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we have plenty of time there between when you're done in town meeting or at the hearing to accomplish that.
Yeah.
Terrific. So that gives us an idea of a timeline, so that's wonderful.
No? Any questions from our resident guest, who is actually the selectman, Rick?
Well, I, first of all, this is my first exposure to this, so I, I really want to thank everyone because I finally have a, a good picture of what you're attempting to do. Uh, and it's much clearer. Uh, I like the idea of the presentation slides online or someplace where folks can get them before the meetings, because it's difficult when you go to a meeting and all of a sudden slides pop up and you've seen them for the very first time. I would also say that even though you have the public hearings, a, a great number of folks at town meeting will look at this as the very first time they ever heard about it when they're voting. So you might want to have a few slides as a short presentation or a handout at town meeting so folks can look at it before they vote.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good idea, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
So where do we go from here? Unless you have more for us, Ted?
Well, I, I, you know, you've got this presentation I'm showing you today, so, um, I would just go through that and, and, and and get familiar with the design guidelines and then, really, it's kind of up to me to get the, uh, to get these, uh, these draft bylaws written up and into your hands, so. I don't think, I don't think you, you need to go through all these slides. I mean, I've got 45 slides surprising the design guidelines. But I think, um, the next step is really me to get the, the, the articles done, so. And I won't wait for all three of them to be done. I'm, I'm working on the, uh, the sign one right now, because that's the furthest along that. And I'll get that out to you as soon as I'm finished with that draft, and then I think, um, it's gonna go, um, sign, probably, um, downtown, and then the used table, used table's a little bit more work. So as soon as I get the first draft done, I'll, I'll get it sent out to you guys.
Terrific.
Yeah, take a look at the design guidelines, and if you have specific questions or comments, give me a heads up. And I'll, I'll, I'll note that and we'll make changes.
Absolutely. I, I just want to note that in planning, uh, Zoom meetings are not great because you have to look at plans and you have to look at a whole lot of things. But a Zoom meeting dealing with this seemed to work well for me today. I don't know of anybody else, but, you know, so maybe we can do another type of this meeting when you're done, uh, in, above regular meetings.
Yeah, this, this works great for me, and it's easier for me to present because, you know, I've got the, the PowerPoint right here and I can shuffle back and forth and I don't have to have Tracy like, you know, next slide, next slide. I just, you know, and I've got other things I can retrieve that's, you know, that are at my, at hand here, so I think it's, uh, and obviously, you know, it's, it's, it's closer to home. I'm also working with Patwell too, they're, they're up on the Nehatre border as well, so. But, uh, yeah, it works good for me as well.
Fantastic.
And if we don't, I mean, we can call these almost anytime. I mean, if you, you know, if you're getting a bunch of questions from the planning board members and they, all right, you know, let's, let's try to schedule something later in the week. If we're doing this in the afternoon, I'm very flexible as far as that goes, so.
Okay, all right.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
Um, is there anything else we need to cover here or any questions from any of the board members or? You know, you probably think of things after the meeting's over, and that's usually what I do.
So I'll still put planning and, I'll, I'll still put the zoning update on our next, on the, um, February 15th agenda. Um, just so that we can kind of update, I can update you where Ted is on different things and, um, maybe, maybe schedule, schedule the next zoning meeting.
Absolutely, and also we probably have questions, you know, thoughts of these after we've seen them. So that would be a great time to have a, a item on our, uh, agenda that allows us to talk about these things.
Sure.
Sure, sure, yeah. Yeah, just let me know when you want to have, uh, our next meeting, so.
We can discuss that on the 15th.
Yep.
Well, if, uh, anybody else has anything to say or if somebody wants to, uh, motion to adjourn.
Well, I make a motion to adjourn.
And Les makes a motion to adjourn, uh, do I have a second? That's, uh.
Oh, he's muted.
Oh, I will second, uh, the motion, and, uh, Wes?
Hi.
Oh, he's on mute.
Art?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye, so the meeting is adjourned at 3:03. Thank you, everyone. It was a good meeting and thank you, Ted, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks a lot.
All right.
Talk to you later.
All righty, bye-bye.